My mic's on.
Laney. Yeah, it's, it's, it's on now, should be.
Oh, no, I forgot it. I've got, I'm green. Are you green?
Yeah, I'm green.
Oh, no? Are you dead? Okay, we'll share. I'll share with you. Okay, this is a regular meeting. Tonight is going to begin at 6:00 PM because we've got a public hearing. And Mayor Lord is out of town and she will not be attending tonight. And we only have one item on the agenda. And I would like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until staff presentation is complete. So, we're going to receive information on our current sidewalk maintenance practices, development obligations, and allow for dialogue on future programs to address existing gaps. And our Director of Engineering, Rebecca Zook, and City Traffic Engineer, Luke Albert, will present. So, take, take the floor.
Now I'm not. All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, or Vice Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening to talk about public sidewalks here in the city of Goodyear. This, over the past couple of years while I've been here, a number of inquiries have come in, whether it was through Public Stuff, or through inquiries going to staff that are out in the field, or also from council members regarding sidewalks. We've addressed those through whatever process, whether it was just answering a question or actually completing a repair in the field. But in addition to those inquiries, during a work session on July 18th for the strategic plan, there was significant conversation regarding sidewalks here in the city, and how we handle our existing sidewalks, what our maintenance plan is, and then ultimately, what, what might we do about gaps that are in the city where we don't have existing sidewalks. So, we appreciate this chance to come before you this evening and talk about our program here at the city. So, tonight, we're going to talk about the existing sidewalk network for public sidewalks within the city. We'll touch a little bit on the private side, but ultimately, we're going to focus on the public side. In addition, we're going to talk about our maintenance program here, how we address those, where the funding comes from. And then finally, we're going to work into a conversation about existing gaps within the city, how those come about, why they're there. And then finally, we'd like a chance to chat with you about a potential policy question, and then ultimately, a discussion with any questions you might have.
There are 400, or sorry, there are 540 miles of existing sidewalks that run along streets throughout the city. This does not include sidewalks that are maintained by HOAs, or on private property, or on city park property. And the width of the sidewalks varies between four feet and 10 feet. And currently, it's a requirement for developments to construct sidewalks as part of their off-site improvements. And this includes five-foot sidewalks for residential streets, and eight-foot sidewalks for arterial and collector streets. Sidewalks are made of reinforced concrete. They're very durable and last decade, for decades, under normal conditions. But sometimes, external factors such as tree root uplifting sidewalks result in sidewalk panels having to be replaced. Most, most requests for sidewalk replacements due to tripping hazards come in through the Public Stuff program. And when a request comes in, city staff drives the entire neighborhood that sidewalk's located in, as if it's a tree root uplifting the sidewalk. The, the trees in that neighborhood are about the same age, and they're built to the same standards. So typically, there's other sidewalks in the area that also have similar issues. So after that neighborhood's driven by the staff member, the list is provided to a contractor. And the contractor that the city has on, on call replaces the sidewalk panels that need to be replaced in that neighborhood. Also, due, as part of a federal mandate, as part of any paving project, including our pavement management program, ADA ramps that are either non-compliant or damaged get replaced as, when that, in advance of any project, like I said, either a CIP project or the pavement management program, any, any street improvement projects. And over the last five fiscal years, approximately 70,000 per year has been spent on sidewalk panel replacements, and about 33,000 per year on the ADA ramp replacements. And in the 2012 updated engineering design standards, some changes were made that helps to reduce the amount of sidewalks that are affected by tree roots. And that included increase in the separation between trees and sidewalks, and also to install a root barrier along sidewalks when they're within five feet of a tree. With that, I'll turn over to Rebecca to talk about existing sidewalk gaps.
All right, well, thank you, Luke. I appreciate that. So, as we started to look at our potential gaps in, in the city, and what might be coming in to fill those gaps, we started with our 10-year CIP program. And we looked over the next 10 years, what roadway projects we have coming in that may fill in some of those needed gaps. And so, I'm going to be showing some maps here in a little bit where we're going to identify those areas. But just wanted to let you know that was one of the items that we looked at for consideration. In addition to not only the city projects we looked at, we did look at those private developments that we've been working with over the last few years. Certainly, we don't have control, ultimate control for the timing. But what we did is try to look at those developments that have communicated with us and have gone through some steps in the, whether it was a zoning process or preliminary plat process, and really looked at the consideration. And we've even reached out to some of them to try to get some timelines. But again, we don't control that, but certainly, we don't want to expend any funds if we know something's coming down the line in short term. In addition, some of the other criteria we looked at are those areas where we have a lot of pedestrian activity, whether it's near and around a retail development, whether it's around parks, schools, things of that nature, where we know there's a high incidence of pedestrians. So we tried to really focus on those areas as being the ones where we, we looked at the gaps because certainly, there is a number of areas within the city that are missing sidewalks. But what are those areas that are critical to our community? And so what we did, and again, there's a number of gaps out there in addition to these, but we really tried to focus on some that we've had concerns brought to our attention, and that we know there isn't either a CIP or a development coming in. And so if you look at the first two, and again, I'm going to show some of these on our maps in a little bit, but I just wanted to talk specifically about these eight that we've identified. Number one and two are located north of I-10. The first one is along the west side of Litchfield. It is just approximately 700 linear feet of sidewalk. Then we have one along McDowell that's on the north side. It's west of the, the Lifetime Fitness, is that right? Lifetime Fitness and sort of on the way if a person was walking from the residences in the Palm Valley area, and they were walking west toward the Harkins Theater. So again, we're trying to look at those areas where we might have a real benefit. And then items three through eight, those are all in the central area. And I'm going to show a specific graphic of one of them in a minute. And then, as we move forward with our presentation tonight, we've got graphics of all of these if we want to see something up close. We don't have anything on our list from what I consider to be the south area or EMR, because ultimately, that is a fully master-planned community, and with that, they actually plan for all of that. So we're always working with Newland on the, on the existing developments, as well as, as an example, Community 11 that's coming in. And the connectivity. So, let's go ahead and move on here. This is a graphic just of, of the overall sort of north area. So from 303 to Litchfield. What you have represented in the green, those are existing sidewalks that are public. As you can see, we have the Pebble Creek area, and then some of the other communities that are considered to be private communities. Those are not contained in that, the listing of the 540 linear feet of, I'm sorry, miles of sidewalk. But the green is existing, and the red are the gaps that we have. Now, you see some gaps around the mall area. Those will eventually be filled in as the mall comes in. I just spoke with you about item number one, which you see along Litchfield West Side, and then also item number two, which is on the north side of McDowell. So I'm going to zoom in here on item number one. So this is a potential future developable lot. However, we have not had anyone approach the city that I'm aware of for this lot. So we looked at that, and then we looked at, what are, what are we near? We're near the YMCA, we're near our park. We also looked at, was there sidewalk on the other side of the street? Absolutely. But it's also not an area where it's easy to cross the street, because you're talking about going across an arterial. So those were other considerations that we looked at. So this particular segment of sidewalk at, at a rate that we have through a job order contract is about $40,000 for installation of this, this section, or just under 700 linear feet of sidewalk. So now I'm going to jump to the, just south of I-10, in sort of what I consider to be our central area. And again, the only color that's been added to this map is the blue. And the blue represents capital improvement projects that are in our 10-year CIP. So I'll draw you attention to the corner which has identified as items five and six. That's at the Saraval and Van Buren corner. So as you see north of Van Buren, you see the blue section. Those are new sidewalks that are going to be installed here within the next few months as part of our Saraval project. Then as you come around the corner heading east, you see a couple more sections, and that's going to be part of our Van Buren project. As well as, if you go all the way over to just on the east side of Estraya, is the sidewalk that's missing on the south side of Van Buren adjacent to Centerra. That will also be part of that Van Buren project. Even though that project runs from Saraval to Estraya, it was funds that we had in place that were provided through the Van Buren Cost Recovery some time ago. And so we have those available to help us out on that section. You also see the Goodyear Boulevard section in the blue down at Yuma and Estraya. And then moving over to the west toward Cotton is the Yuma section that is in our CIP project. That is adjacent to, or at least a section of that is adjacent to Vanderbilt Farms, which has been a topic of conversation related to sidewalk, but that is part of that CIP. So it is included at that time. I do want to call attention to a couple of the locations. Example would be number seven that's sort of in the center of your screen. That is where Hudson Commons, which is a development that we have been working on recently, and we're very hopeful that it will come in. They have improvements located on their northern boundary that's, will be for Van Buren. So that will fill in that gap of the sidewalk on Van Buren. In addition, they have improvements along Estraya, so we'll also have a sidewalk added at that location. On the west side of their property is 158th. They will also have a sidewalk on that side. We do have it highlighted here, though, because we don't know the timing of that. And then in consideration of the rec center that will be just south of this location. If in fact Hudson Commons doesn't come in, and we have the rec center, we would like to add that as into the gap program, because we'd certainly want to allow pedestrians to travel south to that area, because there currently is not a sidewalk along 158 in that area. Pardon me. And then, number four to the top of the screen, I'm going to talk about that in a moment. But as you can see, the proximity is to our heavy retail area that's on the west side of Estraya, and then the Walmart area. So this is in the vicinity of the Travis Park and Canyon Trails area, where we have a lot of pedestrian activity that's going to those retail centers. And we have a section in here that is, I think it's a little bit over 1,100 linear feet in total. And so that particular project would be about $58,000 based on the rates that we have in our current program. Another area or consideration that we had when we were looking at the criteria was what other development might be occurring, or what other agencies might we need to coordinate on. And so Van Buren into our eastern boundary, which is with our partner, Avondale. The section that's between Manzanita and Central has significant pedestrian activity on the north and the south side. The north side is within the city of Goodyear, but the roadway itself is within Avondale. And so the right-of-way is within Avondale. So any improvements to that would be a, really a partnership between us and Avondale. So I didn't consider that in this gap program at this time. In addition, you have the Cotton Lane or the future Loop 303 alignment. Again, we right now have the section that's just south of Van Buren. There's some areas over there where we have had inquiries. But at this time, with the significant construction that we foresee in our future, whether it's near future or a little bit long-term, it wouldn't, it may not be prudent for us to expend funds in that area as well. So we have left that off consideration at this time for the gap program. And so with that, that is all we have to present. And again, I have some additional maps if there's any areas you want to look at. But we would be happy to answer any questions. And then I would add, as a, as a final statement, we have looked at a number of other municipalities, Surprise, Peoria, Mesa, Avondale, that are all either have sidewalk programs, or are beginning that conversation about sidewalk programs to fill in gaps. And I would say the most mature of those is probably Peoria's. They've been doing this for a number of years. And each of those programs either started with, or are working off of, an approximate budget of $50,000 per year, which goes through the supplemental process, and goes through the normal budget process for consideration. And so if it was an interest of council to move forward with something like this, that would be our proposition, and we would ultimately come forward during the normal process to propose something like this.
Well, thank you. I guess we'll see, take questions and comments now? Does anyone have any questions? Joanne?
Well, thank you, Rebecca, and I appreciate us having this conversation. You know, Luke and I especially were hearing about sidewalk issues at an HOA meeting a few months ago. But even prior to that, I, I remember the Vice Mayor bringing up, you know, a couple of years ago, about the sidewalks down Estraya, and about the kids getting to Desert Edge and things like that. And so, you know, there's been times where piecemeal, they've, they've come to, you know, our minds forefront and said, "Oh, you know, didn't realize that was missing there." And I, and I know you guys have been kind of seeing that over the years, "Oh, this, this area doesn't have this," or whatever. So I really appreciate you digging into this, and, and really, you know, looking for where those gaps are. And, and I think also the fact that our city is aging. And so the maintenance of the sidewalks are starting to come into play more often. And, you know, I, I know you mentioned that it, unless I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm kind of getting the feeling that when it's coming to maintenance on sidewalks, that it's more of a reactionary issue, that if somebody reports something, and then you go kind of check out the whole area. Is that what I was, was gathering?
It is. Ultimately, we get a complaint about a particular location, and that's the reactionary part. But then when we're out at a given area, we go ahead and look in that complete area, because knowing it was developed at the same time, you're going to have the same type of growth on the trees. And so we, we end up maybe doing additional improvements in the area as well.
Okay, because I, I mean, I, I know for a fact that on McDowell Road, just east of Palm Valley, on the north side, there are large cracks in the sidewalk. And I'm assuming those are ours, because it's, it's on McDowell Road. But I, I think some of the, the questions that I, I kind of had, and you, you did already tell me about, you know, you looked at whether there was development proposed coming here. You've talked about the ownership. You know, I really appreciate looking at that. Prioritizing the gaps, just like you did, you know, you had eight that said they're by parks, or they're by schools, or they're, or they're by retail, you know, that need to be filled in. I kind of got the feeling by those eight, though, that each one of them could have been in the 50,000 range. So when you said you would start with a possible program of only funding of 50,000, that doesn't really hit those eight. What would be the total package if you were to, you know, what is all of, what do all of those total?
Okay, let's see here. There we go. Okay, so, thank you very much for that question, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Osborne. What I did was, we put some numbers together for, for the sidewalks that are listed. Again, the, and again, I don't want to say they're the top eight. They're the ones that we looked at, because we, oh, I, I know this one over here, there's a concern. So again, you're right. The $50,000 wouldn't be able to tackle all of these. But I'll just give you an example, and again, these are not in a priority order. They're in order from north to south. But as an example, if $50,000 were identified for this program, let's say we would tackle Litchfield first. There'd be then some $10,000 left over that could be transferred into the next year. The next year, we might do the McDowell and La Pasada. The next year, there could be then the $10,000 transferred over where we could do the 158th and Roosevelt. So it would be a program like that, where you could, you would do what you could in that given year based on the current priorities. And again, there could be something we don't even have on this list that could come up because of some development occurs that causes pedestrians to walk to a new location. For instance, Harkins or something like that. So, but I very much appreciate your question and understand what you're saying. But again, my proposition at this time, or our proposition, is not to try to tackle all of them at once.
So one, one last follow-up question. You mentioned the area in Central being obviously Avondale's area. Have you reached out to them and asked them where this sidewalk area would fit in their schedule, by any chance?
We have not at this time.
Okay. I'll leave it for them.
Okay. Councilmember Pazilla?
Hello, Rebecca. I think you've got some of my questions answered, but a couple of quick ones here. Inventory. She mentioned when they're cracked, usually you get calls. But has the city inventoried? Because sometimes there may be sections within the city that we own that need to be replaced that people just don't call. So do we have an inventory like the road system or anything that lists all the cracks or things that, sections of, that have to be replaced? Do we have that anywhere?
So I'm going to turn this over to Luke. But what I will tell you is that we were keeping somewhat of an inventory. But when this originally came up about the sidewalks and what really we had in our, I'll say arsenal of sidewalks, we went ahead in the last pavement management, I'll call it run of the roadways. They were able to collect data along the sidewalks to see where we actually have sidewalks adjacent to the roadway, so that we could come up with the maps that you saw this evening. But I'm going to turn it over to Luke as to how this information is collected, and whether, you know, whether or not, or how we get the cracks. Because I ultimately think it's going to be staff out in the field. If they're working on one thing, they happen to notice it. But we, we do not currently have staff that are assigned to walk, walking the sidewalks. It, it happens as them being out there doing something else.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful while they're out there, either doing road repair, or weed abatement, or whatever, is to identify those areas, because it would be nice for the council to know what we're looking at overall in the city that actually has to be replaced. Because now you have a risk issue from a liability standpoint. If it's cracked enough and it hasn't been reported, somebody trips, falls, breaks, breaks something, then they end up suing us. So I think it'd be very helpful to get that inventory of what has to be, and maybe a cost associated with it. The other piece I have is the preliminary plat process. When we actually do that, and there's a timing issue with the sidewalks within the specific developments, do we put timelines of when? Because typically, you would probably want the sidewalks to go in prior to all of the homes going up, because there's a lot of the traffic once the first home goes in. Do we timeline any of that as far as sidewalks, and then, and when the, we do the preliminary plats?
Yes. Through the construction process, you, for a residential development, you have to have a subgrade in all your concrete work, which includes your sidewalk, your water sewer, and your dry utilities, before we even issue a building permit.
Okay.
So following soon thereafter, you would move into the rest of the, or the, say, the top coat on the paving. And then by that time, you've already got all your sidewalks in. Now, the only time you might see something different is if we phase that particular development. But again, you wouldn't have homes in that area if that section of the roadway wasn't completed. It goes, it runs with the road, in a sense.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other part is, I think somebody's done a quick calculation, about $400,000 for what you've identified so far. And that's not including things that'll pop up during the year. And if you divide that by 50, that's about eight years, I'm guessing. It'll be more than eight, because things will pop up over that eight-year period of time. I personally, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I don't think that's enough money. I don't want to wait eight years to, you know, to make those improvements. But I'm, you know, I'll defer that to some of my other council members. But I think eight years is too long. So I, I think that's money that's well-spent, because again, I'm always concerned on the liability and the risk. People walking in the street as a result of not walking on the sidewalks, and they get hurt, or whatever the case may be. So I'd have no problem, I, I know we can't probably do it all at once, but I have no problem moving it up significantly more than eight years.
Anybody else? Councilmember Campbell?
I don't know if you all know this, but is there ever any money left in the pavement maintenance fund that could be rolled over to the sidewalk fund? Or do they use all of their monies?
Again, I'm going to let Luke answer that question. But I would say for the most part, we try to utilize and program the pavement management money, certainly not up until the last dollar, but pretty close.
Okay.
But if that were a desire, if there were anything left over to roll it into that, we could certainly consider it, but...
That is correct. We, we do spend, I'd say, nearly all that money. And there is a significant amount of the ADA ramps that get spent out of that program. So anywhere between maybe like 30 and 100,000 have been spent annually just on the, the ramp replacements within that pavement management program.
Do we have any idea what the percentage of our sidewalks are that have the ADA ramps?
We, we have a full inventory of the ADA ramps, as, as well as the sidewalks, that was done as part of our pavement management program. And I mean, I'd say nearly, nearly all of our, nearly all of our streets have the ADA ramps, except for some of the, some areas in maybe historic Goodyear and so forth that were built prior to the ADA Act in the early 90s. Might, might not have all the sidewalks in place, but most areas do have the ADA ramps.
Is it our hopes to have ADA ramps in all of the neighborhoods, eventually?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I'm wondering if, I'm assuming we go after ADA monies to help pay for that? It doesn't all come out of the general fund? Do we, are we able to get any federal help with the ADA ramps? Do we, are we able to get any federal help with the ADA ramps at all? Does anyone know?
Not that I'm aware of. That that is part of the normal and customary roadway development.
Okay.
And so it runs with that.
All right. And then my last, I have two more questions. The five years of $75,000, is that a total of five years spending 75,000, which would be 25,000 a year, or is it 75,000 a year?
It's an average of 75,000. I think looking back, and I don't have it right in front of me, but one year was 30,000, one year might have been 112,000, so it was average.
Okay. Oh, well, I agree with Councilmember Pozillo that if there's some way that perhaps we could figure out the funding where we could finish our sidewalks in a reasonable time. I think eight years is too long to wait. And anything that we can do to encourage anyone who is going to develop or build in Goodyear that they include sidewalks for us because it's not only a safety measure since we're a healthy city, we want to encourage our residents to get out and walk and be healthy and to bicycle. And so we need to just make sure that they're willing to partner with us. And I think that would help us because while we have a limited amount of money coming in every year, we try to do the best, we're the stewards of that money and we try to spend it the best way we can. And certainly folks who have been waiting for a long time for the sidewalks, they need them. And we do need sidewalks for our neighborhoods to walk towards the theater because eventually that mall's going to be built and we'd like people to have an access, easy access to it, whether it's by skateboard or bicycle or wheelchair or scooters, whatever they need to do. So, and I want to thank you for this comprehensive report. It was somewhat of what I expected because I knew you weren't going to come here and say we hadn't done anything. So thank you both very much.
Cheryl, did you have?
When I saw this, I was concerned because there are, I do live in the historic Goodyear area and I find that there are homes that I physically cannot get to because there are no curb cutouts and there's no sidewalk, which kind of come hand in hand because the curb cutouts don't do you a whole lot of good if you don't have the ability to get up on a sidewalk. But it's really, I got to tell you, from a personal standpoint, it's terribly frustrating to try and get around. Rolled curbs may look like they're accessible, but they are not. I've seen many, not many, I've seen several wheelchairs dump trying to get down a rolled curb. And when I saw this list, my first thought was what are we doing in the residential areas? Because, you know, if you're leaving your home, you have to get through that area first before you can get to an arterial to proceed on. And so I was kind of concerned when I saw this because I thought this isn't really, I mean, it's important, absolutely important. Aesthetically, it adds a great deal. But we have to look at rolling in some of the residential areas as well because that's the first step to getting out of your neighborhood.
Thank you for that comment.
Just, you know, I wanted to just, I guess, finish by saying that I certainly support a program. I think that we've kind of hit that point in our city's life that it's something we should, you know, keep track of. I also, and it's funny how I've, over the years, discovered, so the area you were discussing on Litchfield Road, that's getting close to the park and close to YMCA. When I was a major marathoner, I would literally bypass that area because I wanted to stay on the sidewalk. And it was always a pain because I'd have to find myself trying to cross the street and there was no way, you know, to do that. I already took my life into my own hands on the Thomas Litchfield light. So it was like, you know, that was a problem. But then also in the neighborhoods, I noticed that there are times, going down Palm Valley Boulevard, I'm at Palmea, when you have T intersections, there is no curb on the other side of the street. And so I'm there with my grandson in our stroller, his stroller, and not only is there a curb to this road, but I have no way of getting up and down over that sidewalk. And it's like, I'm going to have to go all the way back down, you know? So I, you know, some of those things start coming into play when you're actually there doing it. The other thing I was going to say, funding-wise, yes, I'm in agreement. This is not something I'd want to see take eight to 10 years. But I also, so I do believe we need to have a program and a path to fund these things. These aren't large amounts altogether they are, but in one fell swoop it would be. But then I also sit there thinking, you know, at the end of the year, this council sits with almost $200,000 that rolls in the next year and rolls in the next year. And we never discuss that. And it's like, if we had known about something like this, we could have taken care of a sidewalk three years ago. And so, you know, it's just those conversations, you know, as they kind of come in to be, we need to keep them in our minds. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Stipp?
That's a kind of segue into the question and thought that I was having is we've got some funding sources for this. The council contingency, you know, is certainly one of them. But how, proposal is 50,000 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, I guess the very generic question is where do we see that 50,000 coming from? Are we reducing a current CIP project? Are we, do we, have we had any, I mean, do we have a vision on that? What I'm concerned about overall is we're going to say, yeah, we want to do this and it's the 400,000, but that we're going to take money away from something else we've already planned. So how did, when you had those discussions, was there any?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Stipp, it's a great question. I would characterize it this way, 50,000 is really a starting recommendation from staff. We have not done appropriations for the funding sources. One of the, and that would be part of the budget process as we go through this coming budget year. And hearing several comments from council, we can look at it a couple of ways. We can look at potentially one-time funding and do larger amounts to get more of these projects done. There are always, there's always that opportunity with one-time funding available. And what the recommendation here was an ongoing, so you can have a blend of that. You can do one time to augment to really try and get more of these projects done earlier as well as an ongoing. And some of those would be for unexpected as well as taking care of these. But none of the appropriations have been done. These are just ideas and recommendations for consideration at this point.
Yeah, I guess my true question would have been, have you conceptualized where that's coming from? And the answer to that was no.
Not at this point.
Okay. So with that, we make repairs now to the broken sidewalks, et cetera. And that comes out of the normal operational budget, right? So the need for us to over-budget for making repairs may not be necessary. And we may not need to use this special 50,000 account.
Right. We currently make repairs out of a operational budget within the, within the Streets Department. And that covers anything from sidewalk repairs to potholes to broken curb. It's a sort of a generic fund that all roadway improvements come out of. So this would be only for what we're proposing this evening is just the idea or the concept of a gap program.
Okay. And then I guess the last question is around, and I'm having a hard time in my head. I think it's number seven, because I looked at the picture and it says number seven, then the description is throwing me off, which is 158th Avenue, Van Buren to Harrison Street, which is the one that runs the west side of Hudson Commons. If I could just make sure I've got my geography correct? Is that, is that number seven? So I've got it right? All right. So that one is 2,520 linear feet, which would, on the other chart, I think is 141,000 roughly?
Correct.
Okay. So is it possible for us to roll that 141,000 into, because the only reason to do it is because the rec center is going to come? So if the rec center comes, can we roll it into that project? I don't know if that's a legal question or what. But it seems to me if we're going to say we need this for the rec center, that we make it part of the rec center project, we can fund it that way and we can take 140,000 off the list now that eight-year has just dropped by almost three years. And now we're down to five and then we can do some other things. So I guess I would suggest and hope that staff would look at utilizing that as an option to pay for this. Because I agree with everybody that waiting eight years is an awful lot of time. And I don't know of going beyond these sidewalks if a 50,000 ongoing is going to be necessary either. So the one-time funding, from our perspective, may make more sense rather than dropping another ongoing expenditure into the budget, just consideration. But I certainly like the idea of filling in some of the gaps. The list was very comprehensive, so that was, that was very helpful in pre-reading before.
Councilmember Pozillo?
You know, I like the fact that you are using operations to deal with it. But my concern still is, is those are the ones that people call up and say, we've got a problem. I would still like to see an inventory of what's out there. The only reason being is you only may be getting 10% of what has to be done. And we still may be at risk for being sued because we've got bad sidewalks out there. Maybe not, but an inventory would help just to see what our exposure is. I mean, are 90% of the stuff being covered because the people are calling in? Or is only half of the stuff that really needs to be fixed? So that's kind of my concern from a liability standpoint is that we get a handle on what is, has to be redone out there without the city to minimize our liability.
Anybody else? Okay, I think that kind of answers you. I would agree with the majority that it looks like that this is something we really need for safety reasons. And I appreciate the fact that you brought it for us and would come up with some funding options, knowing that probably 50,000, I would have to be in agreement, that's probably not going to be enough, whether it's one-time funding or anything else. So any other comments?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is now the time for councilmembers' reports on current events, or I guess we can hold that to the actual meeting. And managers' summary of current events, I guess we'll hold that to the actual meeting as well. And so we will now adjourn this meeting and our next one's regular meeting will start at 6 o'clock.